Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Up first, we have approval of the minutes for April 1st.
Well, can we do a couple of adjustments to the agenda?
Oh, yes, yep.
I would like to add, under deeds, a quick claim deed, I would like to add map 15, lot 19. And I also would like to, under payroll warrants, remove number 13. You approved that last meeting, and I missed that.
I'd like to make a motion. Will we do that?
I second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. All right. On to approval of April 1st, 2025 minutes. Do we have any discussion?
Looks okay to me.
Okay. I move to approve the April 1st, 2025 minutes. Move to second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all those in favor? opposed? All right. No old business or we're going on a new business, paving bids?
Sent out five bid packets, and we only received two back. One from Pike Industries and the other one from Spencer Group. Pike Industries, uh, for shim, come in at $117 a ton. Spencer Group come in at $110 a ton. Base was $116 a ton through Pike, $102 through Spencer Group. $118 a ton for surface and $110 through Spencer Group. So I recommend we go with Spencer Group paving.
It seemed like the lowest. Do we have any questions?
Is there a significance? I mean, on Pike, I noticed price does not include railroad insurance nor railroad flaggers. If required, a price can be provided. Is that something that we go through a lot?
No, uh, foundry road and part of the river road, we gotta go by railroad crossings. And I have been in contact with the railroad, and they have a supply that for all the town. So it's gonna help them out if we're down there paving and do the railroad crossings, so they're gonna, the railroad's gonna take care of that themselves.
Excellent.
Yep. Pike Industries just had a bad experience with the railroad crossing last year on one of their DOT jobs, so they wanted to put that in there and make sure they were covered.
And Pike has worked with us for many years now.
Spencer Group. Pike is...
I mean, not Pike, it's Spencer Group.
Spencer's group has gotten our bid for at least the last six, seven years.
Exactly. Yeah. Okay. Good.
My move, we accept the bid proposal from Spencer Group for paving.
I second.
All those, no discussion? All those in favor? Up next, we have, I'll go right back to you, sand bids.
We are gonna have to table that until the sixth.
Yeah.
Uh, we went in with Jay and Wilton on the sand bits, and Jay, John Johnson from Jay, is on vacation, so he won't be back until, uh, the 24th. So with them other two towns involved, like to have all three to have a say in it. So we'll table it until then.
I'll make a motion. We table the sand bids till May 6th.
I'll second that.
All, no discussion? All those in favor? All right. Up next, we have special amusement permit ordinance.
That's you, Rick.
That's me. So if we can talk about, excuse me, uh, 6.3 and 6.4, it's for the same reason. Right now, when somebody wants to do either of those, they pull a permit for it, and then the process gets convoluted, where, uh, we're looking at public hearings, we're looking at, everything has to come to you folks and have it signed off on. My recommendation in talking with Kerry is, is that we, uh, do away with that portion of it, where they just get the permit. You know, they come in, they apply for the permit, and make sure that all the checks and balances are there, what's required, and take that from being an ordinance to, uh, policy. So in other words, we couldn't do anything about it right now until the June, uh, elections, where we would remove it as an ordinance and make it policy, and then you can make changes to it as you see fit, without it having to go through, uh, ordinance meetings.
And that, would you feel that would cover both of those?
Well, it's two, it's two separate ordinances, but they both are required to do the same thing. If somebody wants to bring a food truck into town, they're supposed to get a permit for it, do all the stuff, it goes to the code official, gets signed off, then it goes in for a public hearing, and then, once everything passes, uh, the board signs off on it. My understanding is, is that there really hasn't been a lot of people even getting the permits for it, or there's been no one here for the public hearings. It seems like there's just a lot of extra effort being put forth for what is deemed to be, uh, in my opinion, a pretty easy permit to issue, as long as they're gonna follow all the rules that we have for those permits.
And you're, you're the one who checks to make sure they have followed those rules before it goes into place?
That's correct.
I didn't realize that. I must've missed that part of the mobile food vendor. I realized the special permit on that one, yes, but...
Yeah, I didn't realize that they had to go to a public hearing either.
Well, on the, on the, the special amusement, we have, everybody usually comes in and talks to us, but we haven't had anybody ask for the other one since we put it in place, or since it was voted into place. So... Now, how does that, now, does that go through the same, we set up a policy in the long run for appeals and stuff, say if somebody wanted to appeal your decision, how is that?
Yeah, they would go to the Board of Appeals if they weren't granted a permit.
Yeah. Okay.
But the, I mean, it spells it right out, the ordinance, which you have to do to get these, so if they comply with what the rules and regulations are with it, there should be no reason why they can't get one, and it just, it just takes a lot of the hoops out of it, because there's also time constraints.
Yeah.
You know, 15 days for a public hearing notice. And some people are slow getting to the program, just forgot that the date crept up on them, and they wanted to do something, an event, and they've lost their opportunity, because they could do it, with this, they could do it the day of.
That's true.
I have no problem with that, because, I mean, Rick will take care of the checks and balances to make sure it's up to sn- enough to code, so...
And you still have control, 'cause it'll be a policy. It's just not an ordinance.
Yeah. Well, we could probably do with a few less ordinances. It's not a, it's not, even though Bill says, "I remember that. Next time you ask for something."
That'll be a policy.
So if that's something you wanna move forward with, we would have to put it on either the June or November, excuse me, elections or votes, to repeal those two ordinances.
Now, that would just be a simple repeal, though.
Yeah, and then we would have to draft policies for those.
And you would have input onto drafting the policy?
Yes.
You would.
Yeah. I mean, if it can streamline things, and it doesn't seem like we really have a big need for it anyway, so I'm not opposed to it.
I, I think we should move to move it for the June, 'cause we're gonna have more likelihood of having special, special amusement and, and the possibility of a mobile food vendor in the summer months than we would in November.
Is there anything going on in June this year? Do we have, nothing going on for June elections this year?
Just the state, whatever the state comes up with.
Yeah, they'll come up, yeah. So, did we have a motion? Did you make a motion, or?
I'm not sure if I made a motion or not.
Yeah, not quite.
Not quite.
I move that we, I'm not quite sure how to word it, but I move that we move the special amusement permit ordinance and the mobile food vendor ordinance, repeal that and turn it into policy to be decided by the voters at the election in June.
I think that works. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Any further discussion? None? All those in favor? All right. Up next, we have legal services.
So the town's attorney, Jensen Baird, uh, I had an email from them that, uh, I received on Monday that they are no longer going to be performing municipal services, uh, effective May 5th. Um, so, for starters, they're wondering where we want, uh, all our legal files sent. And then, so it's, um, a pretty quick turnaround to try to get a, uh, an RFP out, a request for proposals, out for legal services in, in a couple weeks. So I reached out to, um, an attorney that I know, she's out of Winthrop. It's the law offices of Amanda Meter, excuse me, and she said she would be willing to, um, serve as our legal counsel on an interim basis until we're able to do a request for proposals.
Do we have to do a request for proposal?
That's up to you. Not necessarily.
And you know this person?
I do. Yeah, I've known her for about 12 years, so... She previously worked at, uh, in the legal department at Main Municipal Association, and now she has her own practice, and she does just municipal law.
It looked like her background is very good.
Mm-hmm.
From her website as well, and her, her rates, I would think, would be very advantageous to the town. To be able to save some money over the current costs.
They're, I'd say, they're definitely competitive.
Very competitive.
Kerry, does this include bond counseling?
No, that's the only thing she doesn't do, but she refers it out to somebody that, that's all they do.
So we're abusing Alyssa anymore?
We have the option to do that. They will still do our bond work.
They will.
Yeah.
Now, does, uh, this, Amanda Meter do bond work, or no? So...
We, we have bond, you usually have a separate bond counselor anyway, don't you?
Correct.
So for now, we could stay with Jensen, if I say the name right.
Jensen Baird, yes.
For the bond stuff, and then, we do, uh, looking for doing Amanda A. Meter for the intern, for now, until we can get an RFP out.
I, I would suggest to just skip the RFP and do a retainer with her, pending a list of, uh, her current municipal clients and her dropping by to meet us.
I didn't go on, I didn't, how, how do the rates compare? 'Cause I didn't get that far.
I think they're very low compared. What does Jensen charges now?
It depends on the attorney.
What, what is one of the principal's charges?
Um, I, I don't, I know it's 240 and up.
Okay.
For the...
But that would be for the assistance instead. Yeah. I, I think this is probably anywhere from 25 to 30% less than what we're getting from Jensen Baird. Plus, you have someone who's close to home versus someone who's in Portland. And, uh, you know, our, our, our legal needs aren't all that complex, I don't think, myself.
Not anymore.
I, I haven't, I don't perceive it to be that complex.
No.
Going forward.
Yeah.
Would, do you think they would be interested in being the, more than just the intern?
I could certainly reach out, but...
Oh, I mean, she has in, in her second paragraph, note that my longstanding clients currently pay a rate of 250 an hour, and this is the rate that I would offer to deliver more balls.
Right.
Should you wish to engage my services long-term.
Right, yeah.
Her regular, for hourly basis is 265.
Yep.
I'm all for retaining her.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work out, we can always switch.
Yeah.
I move that we retain, uh, Ms. Amanda Meter to be our legal counsel, after the cessation of the counsel of J- Jensen Baird.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I am.
Now, as a matter of the bond, 'cause she's not gonna do the bond stuff, so would we have to make, where we're already using Jensen Baird, do we have to make a motion to have them continue, or?
Um, no, I, we're all set for a little while, so as I say, I can bring that back to you when we know there's gonna be one closing.
Okay. All right.
I would currently leave it up on Kerry.
Uh, no.
Along?
No, that's, that's all set.
That's all set. Okay.
Yeah.
If, if she was agreeable, could you ask her to drop by the, at the meeting in the future?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we have closed Water Street for History Night, May 23rd.
Sorry, I'm making notes here.
Don't worry, it's over there.
So, History Night last year, the weather was beautiful, and it was very, very, very well attended. I believe there was 209 cars that showed up, and, um, I wouldn't even dare venture a guess on how many people, and we also had the food vendors as well, so, uh, we ran out of room. So I figured, number one, for safety-ish reasons, um, we would close Water Street. And, uh, as I say, Ava and I have spoken about it, so, and he's on board with it as well, so...
Why we move we close Water Street for the, uh, History Night?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Slammed down.
All right. Mark, pump replacement.
So, Holden Meadows Pump Station, which just so happens to be the one that Bruce flows into from his home.
And that's not my fault.
Settled us across the street.
Yeah.
Back, back from there.
What Bruce actually did, I brought the pump casing in. I don't know what he, I don't know what he flushed, but it came out through the side of the, uh...
Getting rid of all those diamonds.
That's too much information.
I have pictures, if you'd like them, Jim. Actually, it was a part of the impeller, which is the piece on top of the, uh, the loop casing there. That pump was put in in 1989, 88 or 89. It's past time to replace them. We've been hoping to get out there and, uh, upgrade that pump station. Unfortunately, we don't have the funds to do an entire upgrade at this point in time, but I might suggest that the money that we've been putting in a reserve account, since July of, uh, 2024, we have about $22,350 in that account. That is enough to buy one pump at this time and have it installed and retrofitted to fit our existing rail system that's there. My thought is, we will, there are two pumps in that station. The other one is not the original pump, that's already been, I would say, replaced, but it wasn't replaced with a new motor, it was replaced with a patchwork motor and, uh, pump. So, we really need to replace that too, eventually. If we replace both of these motors, we will be able to use them as part of an upgrade to the entire pump station, when we get enough funds to do that. So spending this money will not be money wasted, it'll be money that we're spending ahead of the actual upgrade to the pump station. When that upgrade is gonna occur, I do not know, because we do not have funding for it in this fiscal year's budget cycle. Hoping that we can put one new pump in there, and we can have a reliable, at least one reliable pump.
Now, what, did the pumps switch back and forth?
They alternate, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So currently, we just have one pump out there. This pump, we did get a new casing, well, not new, but we found a casing. It doesn't exactly match up to this pump, but we thought it would work, but the, the problem is with a broken impeller. The other part, it's a two-vein impeller, this is a part of one vein, the other vein is broken off as well, we have no idea where that piece went. So we are going to put a different impeller on, not necessarily made for this pump, but we're thinking it may work. So, this pump has to pump uphill 74 feet, and there's a total of 2,100 feet of distance it has to pump. So, we're working with, uh, Stevens Pump out of Monmouth, um, they've got a bunch of pump parts. They think they might have an impeller that will fit this pump that we can put in, and get it to at least work until the new pump comes in. They gave me a price today not to exceed $17,000 to purchase the pump and install it. And this all could have been avoided if Bruce would have just been a little more careful as to what he was flushing down the toilet.
It's a neighbor.
Rex or rock.
Getting rid of all that gold that went missing.
That could be the gold, yes.
Wow.
So, like I said, I was talking with Amanda today, Amanda, I was talking to Rebecca today, and there's $22,350 available in that reserve account. So, we would nearly deplete it by taking seven, up to $17,000 out of that account. But, the summertime is coming, we will be getting accepted, driven away, and we'll be building that account back up through the summer months.
Is that the primary, primary source of revenue for that, is through?
That is the only source of revenue for that reserve account, yes.
For that one, okay.
Yeah. That is Livermore Falls only, or they're, they're the owner of that reserve account. This isn't the joint reserve account with Jay.
Right, this is the one that does...
This is just for Livermore Falls expenses.
Okay.
And we fund that with the money from the septic?
Yeah, septic driven.
As opposed to allocating it in?
Correct. Yeah, there's nothing that comes out of the annual budget to fund that reserve account.
You may wanna reconsider that.
Well, we'll wait till we set rates next week, and I think you may reconsider that, unfortunately.
Good.
So, we need $17,000 from the reserve account?
Up to.
Up to $17,000. I move that we approve up to $17,000 from the reserve account to repair the damaged pump or replace it.
Should we specify that it's the Livermore Falls Reserve Account? Because we don't wanna confuse it with the...
Yeah.
Yeah, amend that to say Livermore Falls Reserve Account.
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna start burying the gold in the backyard again.
Yeah. Lawrence Abaven's deeds, quick claim?
So I have a quick claim deed for, which one is this, map 7, lot 49. Uh, this actually is, um, being sold, uh, through a broker's office. This was one of our, um, real estate foreclosures that actually had not come to you yet, so... They're taking care of this one.
Now, this sold to the real estate broker, now they're paying us?
Yeah, so we'll get a check next week, um, from the closing company for this one.
So, move to approve the quick claim deed for map 7, lot 49?
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Do we wanna jump right down to...
The next one we have is map 15, lot 19. This is for the property that you previously awarded to Peggy Turner for a 95 Park Street. The burnt place.
Right. And what do we do? Wait, what?
Yeah, this is the quick claim deed.
Oh, okay.
This is for what?
So we have to, we have to approve the execution of the quick claim deed?
Yes.
'Cause we already approved the acceptance of the bid.
Right.
Yes.
So I move that we approve the quick claim deed for map 15, lot 19.
I would second that.
Discussion, all those in favor? Look forward to seeing that, all nice and shiny clean soon.
I spoke with her today, she said she's gonna have a, uh, company come in and start cleaning it. She was hoping next week.
So that would make a lot of people happy.
Fingers crossed.
I move we approve payroll warrant number 14 and number 15, and general fund warrant number 57, 58, 59, and 60.
I'd second that.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I took those out of order. My pages got out of sync.
No worries. All right. More discussion? Anybody have? Nothing? All right. Managers' discussion.
So, just a few things. First of all, uh, last, no, two weeks ago, Bill and I went to Augusta, and he received his road scholar, not RH, R-O-A-D, road scholar. Um, that's a culmination of, um, I can't remember how many class, I think it's like 13 classes and trainings that he had to attend. Everything from road surface maintenance to tort law, to supervisory, um, it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive program that the local road center at DOT does, and, uh, he was present at two weeks ago, so congratulations to Bill, it's, uh, it's quite an accomplishment, so... Sorry to embarrass you, but you know I was gonna do it anyway.
Well, I think I saw the picture somewhere.
We saw the picture.
Actually, no.
So, yeah. Um, Plymouth Engineering, um, I, yeah. I finally have a bid sheet from them. Uh, bids are due here in the office by, uh, 1:00 PM on May 15th. So the documents are available through Plymouth Engineering. Uh, there is a pre-bid meeting, a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting on the 24th at 11:00 AM out on the job site. Last week, I had the introductory meeting for the energy audit, so, um, that's gonna happen for this building and the library as well, so that's, that's starting to get kicked off, which is good. Uh, they're hoping to have that project complete by the year end with their report, uh, that will also have recommendations as well as a return on investment, for any investments we decide to make on that. Um, just a couple things that are coming up at our next meeting, it's, uh, probably gonna be a, a pretty lengthy one. We do have to do the public hearing, several public hearings, one of them is for, uh, as Mark alluded to, setting the sewer rate. Um, so we'll have to do that, um, and we'll also have to, any properties that have not been paid off, that were in the foreclosure process, you'll have to, um, motion or make a vote on each one of those individually to send them to the broker, so... And then, uh, the last thing I wanted to mention, because it was a really nice day yesterday, and it started out really nice today, and it got me to thinking about the hanging baskets that we used to have on Main Street. Um, I know Gail and I have spoken about that a couple times over the, the last couple of years, and we had talked about maybe even doing either an adopt a basket, or asking each business, you know, along the, the little strip here to be responsible for watering, because we don't have a means to, to water them anymore. So, any thoughts on that? As I was saying, actually, you wanna chime in on that one, Bill? Do you know if there's any way to water those?
I know it's been discussed many, many times, uh, that's something that has to be done on the weekends, holidays, whatever, and that's... I know it's been discussed many, many times, that's something that has to be done on the weekends, holidays, whatever, and that's, anybody, anybody from our department comes in, that's a four hour call in, so that gets pretty expensive to do that. Can't have somebody that's not a town employee take a town vehicle, so if you had a water tank in it, that kind of rules that out for the weekend. All kinds of legal stuff about the town doing it themselves.
Well, I've always said if there was a basket or a planter in front of my store, I would take care of it. And I know there was one in front of what used to be Serendipity and now it's the hair salon. I don't, it's, I don't think it's, it's there anymore, but I mean, I know we used to water that one.
The town was lucky for many, many years with Creteans. You know, and we bought the flowers from them and they took care of them and that was why we had them for so many years.
Now, when we talk about adopt a basket, are we talking about just somebody adopting it to water it or actually buying the stuff and decorating it?
Just water it, I would think.
Do we have any of those baskets left anywhere that, for most times?
The Creteans does the baskets with the hangers and everything, so they're all planted and ready for sun and all you have to do is keep them on.
So they have baskets all made up if we found funding to buy them? And then we would just talk to people about maybe taking care of them?
Anything that's on, in anywhere, anything that's near the bank building, I'll take care of it, that's not a problem. I have water plants in my store, I can water plants outside of my store.
That, when I asked, I talked about this with Mr. Johnson, he wanted to know when the whole construction was gonna start for depot in May from the road.
Supposedly it's gonna go up to bid this September.
So it won't be this summer?
Won't be this summer.
And they won't start tearing it up in the fall? They'll wait until spring if they?
Could start this winter on some phases of it, but I can't imagine it'd be anything downtown here, but that's hard to say with who gets a bid.
Yeah, I hope not because that would kill business on, well, my business.
But that's the latest one, September of this year is going up to bid.
Carry on, talk to you.
Are we talking about hanging baskets or planters out in the sidewalk?
Hanging baskets.
That would be pretty tall though, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Like ten or twelve, fifteen, well, taller than I am anyway. Difficult to water those.
Yeah, we had the basket, we had the barrel, half barrel in front of us.
Was that what they were before, was barrels, or I don't remember, I think that was before I was around.
No, we had, we had the barrel last year. I think they took it out in the winter because it got in the way of when they were trying to clear snow.
Were you gonna say something, Bill?
I know back in the day when Creteans used to do it, they had a pickup in a van that had a tank in it, they had to have a wand with a long handle to go by and actually water the baskets, because like Jim said, they were up so high. You'd have to have a step ladder to crawl up there with a water jug to do each plant.
I used to watch Pat Nolton and, and her husband getting up there and watering them too, that was something to watch.
All right, so I guess Gail and I will talk and see if there's any appetite for it.
I mean, the hanging baskets are very nice, they're very attractive, but I think when people are walking or driving, those are so far up, they don't even see them. But if you had the half barrel, that's, I mean, if you're not looking where you're going, you're gonna land inside of it, you're gonna see it.
Right, does that matter of having a barrel on the sidewalk? Can they, I don't know how that would.
You have A D A compliance laws with that, so.
See, the one in front of what used to be Serendipity, their store sat back and there was a pillar that sat back and it was up against the pillar, so it wasn't in line of the actual sidewalk. And, I mean, there's only, my, my, the door to my store is the only one that's right on the sidewalk, all the other ones sit back, so I mean, they, they could be set back along there, but mine's the only one that sits right on the sidewalk. And one of these days, one of these kids on their ten speed or their little motor scooters is gonna go right through my plate glass door.
I would definitely like to look into it, it'd be nice to see some flowers back downtown, so.
I mean, the flags are nice, but I, you know, I, I think whatever we had should be brought to a level where they're actually visible to people driving by and people walking.
Remember how the hangers are fastened to the posts?
See, there's, there's like a bracket that hangs out. It's a bracket that hangs off and then they hang it from there, but it's a good eight or, it's a good ten feet up.
I think they have to be high enough up so that people aren't hitting their heads on them.
Right.
Right. I mean, you could get one of those hand pumps and put a wand on it and you could water several at a time if you had a spot where you had like one of them, twenty-two of them, storage totes that are full of water, if you had that set up so somebody could fill it. You know, I'm just saying, to make it easy, somebody could fill one of those, pump it with a wand on it and go around and water without having to have any fancy equipment.
I'm wondering if that's something that our C C M. could handle, watering.
Perhaps you could come back with some more information.
We could collect some rain.
We'll talk, yeah.
If you really want them to grow, I could supply the water.
I bet you could, hey. If you could not save on sewer rates. If we take it before it gets to the sewer pipe, it would save people money.
Might cut it down on our sludge costs, that's for sure.
They look like it'd be very easy to lower down, look like they're just clamps that hold them on there, you could lower them down, but you would still have to have it so at the bottom of the plant is at least six feet high, so people could walk by and not hit their heads on it, would be my question.
Can the town afford some for soakers?
One of them, one of them, them pump bottles with the wand on it, you could put a hook on it and you could walk by and, you know, you could water a few at a time every, with every fill up, without too much trouble.
Of course, if we had them right now, it would be no problem keeping them watered.
In July, we don't have rain for a month.
All right, we'll check into it.
Okay. Was that everything?
That's it.
Wow, on the, you, I know we talked about it, about Plymouth, where they're gonna be putting that in the Sun Journal?
Yes.
And would maybe possibly get it out, because that's just, they're just gonna stick it to the Sun Journal?
Yeah, I'll put it on the town's Facebook page.
Okay, all right, awesome. All right, department had discussion, do you have anything, Billy? Anything else?
The new plow truck, well, the new cabin chassis come in like three weeks ago and it got delivered to Viking Civs last Wednesday or Thursday. And we are planning on starting to sweep the roads downtown here next Monday. If one of that comes in like it's supposed to, but that is our plan, it's not sweeping.
With the new loader? Attachment, with the new loader attachment?
Nope, no, I do the same thing in the Tri-Town, Jay Wilton will go through the big sweep up. We'll have the water truck, Wilton will have the truck to dump into, so we're looking to start that Monday. Finished picking up all the heavy stuff yesterday, so sweeping should be just a couple of days, we have downtown done. I think that's it, isn't it? Yep.
All right, thank you. Rick, do you have anything else?
I do, just a couple of things, so far things have been going really well. Bill and the crew with the Public Works Department got the Nissan van, cargo van, all set up, so I've used that the last couple of days to start learning the town roads, making my way around and in doing so, have issued one notice of violation and I have two properties that are, have an extreme amount of opportunity to come in at compliance. So, for left door knockers, I've inspected the outside of both properties, taken pictures, left door knockers for the property owners to get back in touch with me. With properties like this, they will definitely be a long road to hoe to get them into compliance. And it can take a couple of different hats, they can voluntarily comply and it will move along and there'll be progress or they cannot comply. At what point in time, I would come back to you folks with where I've been with them so far, where I'm at, what walls I've hit. And then, under your direction at that point, after the notices of violation have been served and failed to have any compliance with, then it would be up to you to authorize me to start fining. And once we've exhausted the fines, then we're ready to take them to court. So, hoping it doesn't go that way, I would much rather work with people, but it may, it may come to that. So just be prepared, but I think it will only take one or two, if we do have to go that route, for folks to realize that the town wants to make things right.
Yes, I mean, we, we run into each other there at the beginning of the week and what was one of the comments, the Wild West is, is done?
Yeah, I don't think I said that.
No, you didn't, no, but I'm saying, somebody said that piece, looks like the wild, wild west is over, huh? I said, yeah, yeah, that was the plan, so.
And I think you'll find, you know, talking with you and, and the other person there that are pretty easy to get along with. You know, we have conversations and.
It was, it was, I didn't know because we knew each other.
No, no, it, it, I mean, really at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, I mean, it does matter, but it doesn't matter who you are or what you do. We have rules and, you know, we all have to follow them and.
That's right.
It's, it's, it's easy enough and I, I think that people will, will, you know, fall in line as things happen. They'll get to recognize the van and it's either gonna be me or the A C O. that'll be in it for the most part. And it's, you'll just treat people with dignity and respect and, and I think that gets you a long way.
Well, the van looks very official, so I'm thinking that's gonna put a big part than having just someone pull up in their car going, I'd like to talk to you about whatever.
Well, at least they know it's a town vehicle. You know, it's got municipal tags on it, it's got a light, it is kind of comical to watch me get in and out of it, but.
I was gonna ask. You're not a small guy, so. I, I'm not as tall as you, but I know what it's like to ride around in small vehicles.
I wouldn't want to go to, to, you know, press guy on it, but for, for tooling around town, I mean, it's, definitely will get the job done.
You could always push the seat back.
Oh, it is, we'd have to unbolt it to make it any more comfortable. But it, it's fine, I am happy to have it, you know, for something to use. And, and just be more official and it really does go a long way, a lot of heads turn when people say, and I don't ride around with the lights on, only when I'm stopped to, to do a site visit and investigation for, for what's needed. But, it's, it's a great tool.
I mean, I'd already seen pictures of it and the whole bit and you went through town and I'm, I was, wow.
Oh, so you've, you've seen it then?
Mm-hmm. But I did, it caught my attention and it's like, wow, we're all kinds of uptown.
Grocery, there you go to what, Grocery Catcher or?
Grocery getter, yeah.
Well, it's one of those things, we want to bring the town up a little bit, you know, we need somebody like you that can go out there and have the time to get it done.
The big thing is just gonna be consistency, you know, be, be consistent with people, be fair, but also be firm.
Yep, appreciate it. Do you have anything else, Rick?
No, I'm good, thank you.
We lost Mark, so.
I don't know where you went to. I didn't say nothing to you. Positive, it kept him quiet. So, my turn?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, select board members. So tonight, what I'd like to do is I'd like to talk to you about implementing a drone program here in Livermore Falls. And before I even really get into the nuts and the bolts of it, the only reason I'm presenting this tonight is because of budget wise, I'm, I'm doing really well. I'm gonna probably roll over a significant amount of, of money that wasn't spent this year, just because of staffing and stuff. So the only reason that I'm talking about it is because there's not gonna be any type of public expenditure that would result to this. It's just me coming to you, believing that, I don't know if it classifies as a C I P. No, but still, it's a pretty large expenditure, what I'm asking for and I just want to make sure that, you know, I had that discussion with you to kind of get what your, what your feelings and thoughts are on it. So, with that said, drone technology is, has come down quite a bit, so the devices that I'm looking at now, about ten years ago were thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollar devices, so these two that I've presented to you, there's an option, I think, for around seventy-five hundred and there's another option for around nine thousand dollars that are in front of you. So, some of the things that the drone would be used for would be for missing persons and I'm not sure if the select board aware of it or not, I'm a drone operator, have been a drone operator for more than a decade now and I, I do have my own personal drone, one that was used to locate a missing child autism.
I remember that.
And so, that, that kind of event is something similar to what this device would use. This device is significantly more advanced than a consumer grade drone, but I use more because of the thermal imaging on it, so it's able to be used in day, night, and there's some other benefits to it too. During the course of my tenure here at Livermore Falls, we've had, believe it or not, several escapes or people run for pursuits where they ran into the woods and a drone would be used to track people like that down through thermal engines and also to keep an eye on that physical officers that are on the ground too, because we get to monitor that as well, how many, how many officers are, are on the ground as well as if there's a suspect in the area and then how to walk those officers into that suspect. It'd be used for mapping accidents, so if we have a, a serious accident, we would use the drone to take aerial images of, of that accident as opposed to doing a, an actual two scale sketch, we would, would use a therm, the drone for the imaging as far as that goes. We would use it for events to monitor the crowd and kind of make sure that there's nothing that happens as far as like violence, acts of violence, as far as that goes. Use it for crimes, also during my tenure, we've had a couple of the dispensaries broken into, we've used assets from other neighboring organizations to help us, we'd be canine or things, but if we had our, our own drone with thermal capabilities, it'd be nice to have that launched and be able to, to look for, for the suspects that are, that were literally just missing in events like that. In addition, I've also used my personal drone to map footsteps and stuff in burglaries as well. And then, we would also use it for mapping thefts like serious, serious thefts or, you know, we've had a, we're not necessarily experiencing it now, but there's a lot of theft of motorbikes in the area, but they all end up here, so it's a, it's a device that we'd use also for that as well. And another big one would be to monitor fires, we've had three structure fires within months, you know, this, this winter. And that device is a, it'd be a very important device because with the thermal imaging, you can determine if the nearby structures are getting hot enough to, to ignite or start to melt, so you can guide firefighters on the scene to, hey, start putting water on this structure because thermally it's starting to get very hot. For the department, it, it adds job enrichment, so it allows officers to get trained for those that are selected to do the program. I mean, it kind of gives them some ownership and, and to also do specialized position within the organization, which is, which is healthy for the organization. The device itself is low maintenance, so there's just not a lot that goes into it, we don't have to do oil change, so don't think like that. The downside to it is, is that in a way, once we have it, we kind of have it, right? So then, you know, who, maybe eight years from now may say, hey, we'd need to look at, maybe consider another device. I can see that the community would have some concerns with, hey, would it be used to spy or monitor or, or look at my property? And, and the fact of the matter is, this main law does not allow for that, so if we was to look at a specific property, we would have to have a warrant to do that. So we just cannot launch it and go looking, we had to have a reason, I mean, it needs to fit within the guidelines of the law. Ideally, what I'd like to do, if you gave me the green light, I would like to have five operators trained at the department. I'd like the device to pretty much be out all the time, because that's when it's gonna be important. And I'd also like to create a part. And I'd also like to create a partnership with the fire department where I'd like to get maybe one or two of the fire department personnel also trained as, as pilots as well. So when we do have a structural fires, if the officer that's out is not an operator, you know, a firefighter, then maybe the scene may be one and then can launch it and monitor that, that fire scene. The, the big difference between the two options that I provided is, one is about a five-year-old technology, so it's kind of in that realm where it's getting faded out. And then the higher-priced option, which is the Matrice four T, that's the, the latest generation. It just came out this year. As a matter of fact, it's only been out for a couple of months, so it's the newest tech that's out there. And it's, both of them are, they're, they're amazing pieces of equipment. The Matrice does have an IEP rating, which means that it can be flown in some inclement weather where the other one would be grounded otherwise, because it cannot have any type of moisture at, at all when flying. But the, the Matrice four T does, it would be able to, to handle some of that. Of course, we'd have to create policies in order to determine when those can and cannot be launched. And then officers, when they go through the Part 107 program for the license, they would also be educated on, you know, when they should and shouldn't fly, you know, just because of how ice can form on the props and cause a device to fail in, in flight. So with, with that said, it, it is something that I would like to purchase in this year's budget, so then that way I don't roll that money over next year and, and try to find a vendor that would, that I'd be able to purchase from, that wouldn't go out to bid or anything like that. It would just be through whoever really, I, you know, if I did a search and found the best price, I'd like to order from that vendor. And I'm open to any type of questions that you may have and, and thank you for your consideration.
You, you talked about the benefits of, and but the one that you didn't mention that I think would be very important is that if certain elements of the town who might be inspired to do something wrong knew that they could be watched or followed or found with a drone, that it would be a deterrent.
It, it, the people, it's a small community, so people talk. And when they know we have something like that and it's out on patrol at any given time, then absolutely, they realize that it's a, it's a piece of technology that wasn't there before.
Exactly.
And it could be launched.
And it could very easily be a deterrent and cause them not to do what they think they can get away with.
Right. And, and in today's police organizations, they're, the prices are coming so low on them that it's, it's a pretty common item to be introduced, even in small departments. A good example of two is we have the river. I think it was not last week, but the week before that, somebody jumped into the river in Lewiston and they used thermal imaging to try to find that person as well. But we have the river that pretty much runs the length of the community. And if somebody was to fall in there, you know, that would be a tool that we'd be able to immediately use to attempt to locate that person.
Do any of the surrounding communities have this technology?
So Andrews Goggan County is the, the closest organization that we have where we can utilize that resource. So if we have it, we'll be the only one within, I think, like the Farmington, Wilton, Jay, Livermore Falls will, will be the only agency to have it.
You'd think Farmington would have it with the college and everything.
They, and I'll have to check, but I'm pretty sure that they don't have one. I think that they may lean on the, the county to provide theirs.
Now, would that be something we would have to come up with a policy, say if Jay did not have one, and where we send people over there, we trade officers back and forth for calls? I mean, would that be something we'd have to draw up a policy?
Absolutely.
If they asked for it.
Mut, the mutual aid agreement, you know, that we kinda have standing now is something that I would need to weigh into is, is how much time would we offer an officer to do something like that, you know, given that the fact is, is that the officer could be in flight for, for an hour or more on an event that they're looking. With that said though, if they have a subject that runs from them, we're generally involved with that anyway, just as much as they're involved with us. So it's, it's kind of a, a give and take relationship that we have with them. And, and I support the fact that they're there, because at one time, we're, we're only one officer working and, and same with them. Right now, there, there's just one officer working, so they also really value our support as well.
Well, how does that work as far as insurance wise, say if it's damaged during a use?
So these both have a, a program where there's an insurance that's included in the device. So if it was to fall out of the sky or crash, then I think you pay like a, a small deductible for it and then the device gets rebuilt. I think they send you a refurbished device in order to keep it up and, up and running. With, with that said, they're, these devices are autonomous, so you can actually program them to flight and, and they can actually run a mission with unmanned and return. So the obstacle avoidance systems on them are extremely advanced. So if you try to flight into the building, the device will not. It will get near the building, it will go up over the building and back around the other side, they, they just know.
When we go back to talking about like people's privacy and stuff, obviously you need a warrant to go search somebody's. How does that work if a criminal flees onto somebody's property and we have to fly over their property in pursuit of them?
So that, that falls within the hot pursuit, so that, that would allow us, because we're not looking for anything in particular on that person's property other than that person. And I think most members in the community are gonna be a hundred percent okay. Same, same if we had to chase the person through somebody's backyard or climb a fence, you know, the same exact thing applies. And I think the community itself is very supportive that, hey, if you needed to use the device to find somebody that's not good in my backyard, then by all means, please use the device to see if they're there or not. Or, or if you have a, a property that has a larger building and stuff like that, I mean, you just don't wanna have somebody that could potentially be dangerous there.
Okay.
Do you have an idea what the lifespan is?
So my, my guess on it, the, the newer device is, is going to be out there, I would say, for five years. So my, my anticipating that we would probably have the device for about eight years.
It's a long time.
Yeah, well, it depends on, depends on how much flight time we get out of it. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's relatively low maintenance, it's, it's all sealed, it's dustproof, so, you know, for the most part, it, it should work for, for years and years, unless something major happens where somebody crashes and stuff, but they're...
That's what I would do.
It's one of those things, but everybody that flies is gonna be a...
I've done that before.
Everybody that flies is gonna be a drone pilot, so they're, they're gonna be responsible for that device and it's not a cheap device. So if there's something that says, hey, I'm gonna risk crashing it, then they're, they're pulling away from it at that point, because their, their, their job is to, to find people, but more than that is to protect that asset.
Right. How much use do you think we'd get out of it? If you had to just hazard a guess that you would be held accountable to?
What, what was it, one more time, question?
How much use would, would we get out of it in a year?
Oh, um, let me see, I, uh...
Any idea?
Well, you could just think about whatever happened in the last year and how many times it would have been useful.
And that's kinda where I'm at right now. I, I think that maybe sixty hours.
Really?
Yeah, of, of actual use. I think we'd get maybe sixty hours total in one year of using it.
Okay.
I think you would probably help solve some, some cases or help, you know, find people. You said that might otherwise disappeared.
Yes. And, and my thought process on...
Like finding people and, and so...
I already said, wouldn't like to pay for it.
And that's, that's always been my thought process of the drone program, is if you could recover one person, then, then it's just, it's just one soul.
I know we spent almost two days looking for a girl a few years back walking through the woods.
Yeah, and we've had some people run, law enforcement officers.
Yeah.
We've, we've had some of that. And in the past, I've, I've, I've recovered, I believe, three deceased with it, with a drone.
Yeah.
Because it, it just cuts down on the fact when you're out there and you're able to look, you know, like there's, there's a deceased person right there, as opposed to officers spending, you know, hours and at times days to try to locate somebody.
Now, this is money left over in the reserve account, I'm assuming, from not having office?
Yeah, staffing. So like, so right now, my budget, I, I think that I'm still below seventy percent of what my expenditure is.
With the ATV thing for the fire department.
Yeah, 'cause we're not, we're not using that money.
Right, yeah.
So the money's already been...
It, it's, it's in my current budget. So I, I don't, I think my, I'm still under seventy percent of my actual annual expenditure right now.
Then we've already, we've raised money for that budget.
Well, people like hearing that, that we're not just finding magical money, that it's money we've already, you know, that's already put in the budget that did not get spent.
Correct. It's, it's, it's already there, I'm not asking for, for anything extra. The only thing I'm asking for is permission to spend it.
Well, I think it would help keep you guys safer too, if you know where somebody is, you know, versus wandering through the woods and they could be anywhere.
Absolutely.
Somebody wanna make a motion to...
So we're gonna, it sounds like the fourth generation's where to go. Where it can fly it in possibly some bad weather and it's, the other one's almost outdated.
That'd be my, my recommendation. And then the, the cost difference between the two is not staggering at all.
No, for ten hundred.
Yeah, I, I, I would move that we authorize the police department to investigate and purchase a drone technologies. The, preferably the fourth-generation DJI Matrice four T Enterprise unit at an approximate cost of ninety-five hundred dollars and to expend the approximately two thousand dollars for training and of the staff and, and the police department and the fire department, using money from the unexpended budget this year.
One second now. Second. Is absent, all those in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right. Do you have any public comment?
Can I just have a question?
Yeah.
Have we in the past done a community cleanup day? And maybe Bill would have some input on that, where he's been along for a while.
We used to be years and years and years ago, but then it got so, the only thing we could do was pick up like brush and leaves. We could not pick up demolition, mattresses, tires, anything like that. So then it got so, people just weren't doing it. Try, even tried doing like a sign-up sheet, head one week that we go around, you stopped in here, you signed up, if you had leaves out there or brush, we'd go pick it up. Then it's got, so there weren't no interest in it. Once we stopped doing all the demolition, the tires, the couches, the TVs, that just got too drastic and you never knew what you was gonna find in there. So kinda had to stop doing that. But that was probably twelve years ago, about twelve, fifteen years ago.
Yeah. Now, was that just the sides of the road that you're talking about?
It would have to be out on the side of the road, corner of the driveways or something like that, we'd start picking it up. And it had to be in a pile, couldn't be where they just swept up their whole lawn and you was there cleaning up a whole window.
It couldn't be just the whole front yard?
Yeah. So...
Okay.
So what about like the trash just along the edge of the road? Have, have we ever done any type of a community event to maybe everybody chip in and clean up their own stretch of road?
There was, a few years back, there was a church group that started doing that and then they had to scale it back and they did it for, they would pick three or four houses that they would offer to go in and help clean up. And they made arrangements with us that, you know, we would take the trash, but we just couldn't eat everything for demolition, TV, these couches, because you're talking a whole lot of money that is just not in the budget for that.
Right, right.
Cause...
Cause we have to pay them to take it away.
How does that work? I mean, can, would we have to have a safety thing set up if somebody just wanted to get people to walk the side of the road and fill up trash bags?
Volunteers would have nothing to do with the town, the way I understand it. I mean, that's what, like the church group, they would always reach out to us and say, "We're gonna do like these two or three houses, we wanna bring it in, these will be the people bringing it in that are non-residents", so we would have it all lined up.
Yeah.
I believe last summer, they did, I think it was three properties that they got permission to go in and do.
Do, do we ever have people that have to do community service for, I don't know, maybe they broke into somewhere or they got a DUI and they gotta do some community service where they could give them a, give them an orange vest and a bag and go down, down streets and...
No, we can't do that, because they gotta be, they gotta go through, if they're working out on the road, they gotta go through work zone, traffic control class.
Oh, God.
We gotta buy them steel toe boots, all that safety stuff.
Well, I've seen that, I've seen that in communities where, like, like my nonprofit, I get people all the time calling, "Hey, I gotta do twenty hours, what can I do"? And I'm like, "All right, go clean this".
We have had them, they could go down and they could rake down to the, they could run a rake, and they could run a push drill, but the only thing they're allowed to do, because you gotta worry about...
They can have a picker and a trash bag.
But you gotta worry about needles. I mean, everybody would be surprised on how many needles that we find a year in Livermore Falls on the side of the road.
Honest to God.
I never thought of that.
We have them in our churchyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, we usually do is clean up in our little neighborhood and they tell all the kids, you know, "Don't touch nothing, if you see something, I'll come deal with it" or "One of the adults will come deal with it, because you never know". I mean, I've never found anything, but you never know. And like I said, walking on the side of the road, you have to have everybody all done up. But if you had a bunch of volunteers, that's different, you know?
Cause they're not the employees of the town or not.
Right.
All I ever pick up in front of my house are those little tiny two ounce liquor bottles.
Those are five cents.
And those are five cents, they go in my re, they go in my recycle.
This doctor at the door got his fifteen cents.
I know what it reminds me of.
We picked up over six hundred cans in the str, just on one mile of our road.
A record road?
Over the course of the year, record road. We picked up over six hundred beer, liquor bottles, the nip bottles, yeah.
Hones to Lord.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Not to mention the trash.
And not, yeah, the trash. We pro, I think we had like thirteen bags of trash.
So it sounds like it would have to be a separate kinda entity away from the town.
Right.
A group wanted to get together.
Maybe some kind of a, you know...
Community volunteer group.
That's why we need Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and Brownies and Girl Scouts and all that stuff again.
Or you choose to do it too.
Okay.
I just have one question, how big is the drone?
You, you know, it's, it's only gonna be like this big, it's just, it's not very big.
Just a little one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But very sophisticated, it seems like.
Very, very, very sophisticated.
Well, some of the movie ones are like this big, so I, I didn't know how big it was.
It's not a fly.
I mean, it's, 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 it's very sophisticated. It's, uh, it's sophisticated enough that if you, if you launched it, you would be able to see something, they'd have no idea that it was even there, because the zooming capabilities on it are...
And it's quiet, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you'll, you'll know if it's around.
Yeah.
If it's in a, if it's in a vicinity, you'll, you'll know that it's rounded. And then there's also like the...
But not if there was a fire or an accident, I mean, there'd be so much else going on.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll know that it's there. But I, but I think like on that one, the zooming capabilities is one hundred and twenty-two five.
So if, if it's a criminal and he's running for his life, his heart's gonna be pounding so hard in his ears, he won't hear it.
He won't look up.
Any restrictions of early at night?
No, because you're, because you're flying into law enforcement, so you kinda like, we're in like a, a different realm.
Yeah, it'd be good to have it two o'clock in the morning, just kinda do a little...
Well, yeah, I think like as far as like integrated into like regular patrol, I mean, we've gotta be cautious, because it can only be used for public areas. If we were to look at it like that way, we can't look at, like a residence or anything like that.
You could go down the street, right?
Yeah, you could.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or, or somebody was having, you know...
Someone's gonna break in somewhere, it's gonna be in the wee hours usually.
Yes, versi.
And so, you know, like...
It's fun though.
All of a sudden.
Oh, you're hungry, that's right, sorry. All right. Do we have any other public comment? None? All right. I move that we enter Executive Session One, MRSA Subsection 405, sixty-union negotiations.
I second.